Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. And the first thing I'm gonna ask, is there any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, no changes from staff, is he?
Great, great. Uh, next thing I'm gonna ask for is approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions or discussion, um, after reviewing, if consent agenda is submitted, I'd be much too approve it as submitted.
Thank you.
Okay. Ethan, are we reviewing these motions still?
Your preference, I mean, we are like, and it's a suggested best practice for transmission.
Well, since I like to hear Jamie's voice, we'll go ahead and rely on her to, uh, re-read the, uh, motions in the second tonight, so.
Motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the consent agenda for, for July thirteenth, 2020, seconded by Councilmember Clausen.
Okay, there's the motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same side. That carries unanimously on the consent agenda of the next item is public forum. Uh, looking at the empty seats out there, I don't believe we have anybody. Do we have anybody, Jamie?
No, I do not.
So nobody, it's a public forum, so we'll close that section. We'll move on to unfinished business. There's nothing under unfinished business, which is a great point, unusual. So we'll move on to E, new business. And the first item is discussion of public works request purchase. Right, right.
Um, it's got to run under the camera here. Um, as you can see from the agenda reports, uh, there are specifications for a new wheel loader, um, for the local sports department. Uh, this is speed done, so we can identify as to what the new machine is. Um, so a hundred percent that this is avenue will go, but we just kinda wanna see what the price point of the new piece is, uh, for this type of equipment, uh, since it's been sixteen years since we bought our last one. Uh, this was slated for replacement last year. Um, put off because at the time, uh, it was in good working order, uh, but needed repairs though, uh, we're evaluating, um, getting one, so. The specifications and the notice to, um, or invitation to vendors is included in your packet, so. Just, I guess, had a right to try and answer any questions if council has them, or. Uh, but we'll do for approval to essentially get this process started and get the specifications and invitations sent out to various vendors, uh, so that next meeting will, or not next meeting, but first meeting in August, we would commonly present what has been returned to us based off of that invitation of vendors.
Any questions, council?
I have one question, uh, and it's maybe even no answer to it, but we know roughly what the new piece of equipment will cost. And a thing you've mentioned in here that the old equipment would be sold option or whatever, do you have any idea of the value of our old wheel loader?
I really don't.
Okay.
I really don't understand.
Uh, one other question. Are you looking for anything, um, in this new piece of equipment that they haven't be able to do anything that our current equipment doesn't do? Any accessories or implements that you wanna bring along with it?
The specs are set up. The only difference would be is, uh, this one will be a tool carrier. In other words, it'll be a changeable bucket.
Okay.
So we're, the machine we currently have has the multipurpose bucket on it now, uh, which is basically a clamshell type and a regular bucket, dozer. I mean, it can do multiple things. Uh, we like it, so we want that, but we also wanna be able to put a general purpose bucket on, which will be a little bigger for just loading trucks. We may not use it a lot, but I think we will definitely use it, uh, during the winter on snow removal, if we get any, you know, to help us winters go. Uh, because we're really hard on that multipurpose when we're cleaning streets. A general pop or purpose will be a better fit for scraping streets and doing some other work for us, but.
And as far as the accessory buckets and so forth that you have here existing, you have what crucial age, multi-purpose bucket?
It, no, it is a multipurpose bucket. It does, it's, they call it a four-in-one. So it's basically a bucket, a dozer, a clamshell, and there's one other option. I can't remember what they use it for, but it, basically how you put the bucket is what it does. So it's, it's just one bucket.
Okay. Uh, one of the values, that would be a consideration of equipment that it would pin on too.
No, it's, it only, and it's a direct pin-on. It doesn't come off, or you can't take it off if you take the pin down.
You hear the guy that uses this, you know, ask what you're talking about, we're gonna deal with that.
So.
Do you need any action from the council on anything for this tonight, do you?
Um, yeah, actually, we look for a motion to approve those bid specifications and authorize us to go, because this is anticipated to be for outside of the existing.
I would make the motion to approve the bid specifications and authorization for staff to go out to bid for a wheel loader for public works. I do like the way you did your fed, giving different vendors different opportunities to show their specifications.
Thank you. I agree. I think the bid specs are fine.
Any other comments, council? We will go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Farmer to approve the bid specifications and authorization for staff to go out to bid for a wheel loader for public works, seconded by Councilmember Campbell.
All in favor say aye. Close same side. That carries unanimously, and we'll move on to our next item, which is the discussion of Wedwood Golf Course annexation. I can see our city attorneys here for this. Probably start with you, Ethan, and I'm sure Brad will have something to say.
This is a topic we brought up in a work session. Um, worked with city attorney Janz on, uh, getting just kind of some information prepared for you all, so you can see what the process is. Of course, it's a little more nuanced, because Wedwood is city property, but it's not physically attached or continuously attached to our existing city limits. Um, so you have the information that Brad sent out to you all, and I'll turn it over to him. Um, I will just say that this is kind of a good scenario, because we are a landowner in this aspect, but it is a process that all of you need to be on board with, because we are gonna have to get county involved and make sure that there's no issue there, which we don't anticipate.
Now, Ethan, can you tell us what the significant advantage is to doing this?
Um, it helps bring, just, basically, it's all a lot of, I'll say logistical, um, from applying to like the C and B permit every year. Uh, we've had instances out there, um, you know, it's city properties or law enforcement is involved, but technically it's county property. So there's kind of that gray area, if you will. Um, it also just allows, um, us to have a little more control over that city limits and things that you might pass regarding, you know, various ordinances, say, um, a mask, that's something then that de facto would travel to that, because it's still within city limits. Um, like right now, two moments exist just here. It's not necessarily enforceable, of course, but it's outside of city limits. So, um, right, and doing it together, we'll just sort of clear some things up, like on taxes and other issues like that as well.
I have a question. I don't see how, but could, is there any possible adverse effect to the surrounding properties of the neighbors?
But the weekend event will buy at this particular point, given the longevity of that golf course and the queen in that place for that period of time, and being sub-contained, which doesn't jump across the road, and there's not different things there that we have to deal with? I don't think so.
This, this was pursued back in, was it 2006? Why was it not done then? What's different now than this? Uh, fourteen years have passed, and you're asking me that question? You slept some?
Yeah. Uh, I don't honestly know, uh, other than there hasn't been a material change really to the, well, there have been, but none that really impact this the way we look at doing it, um, in the forms of annexation that are available to us. They continually tighten that up. Uh, and at the time, what they often refer to as an island or a real post-estate type of an annexation or an annexation, uh, is not always favored. Uh, it's, uh, it's not nearly as much of an uphill if you own it as a city already, and it's being used for commercial purposes, completely supported by the city, such as a golf course. So, and we don't, we aren't annexing ag land. That was one of the, the things beefed up in the last more than a decade, about how much, where, and in what circumstances, all these different types of hoops you would jump through, you can get it done. If you could. So, um, the, the short form answer is I don't recall anything that was as dramatic impact, we just kinda didn't go forward at that particular point.
It seems as though there was the housing development potentially in planning at that time, and I wondered about city utilities being extended.
Extended.
I think county refused that transaction request.
But it was county that refused it.
There are four separate property owners out there. If county, if we proved to go forward and contact county, I believe county goes out to the adjacent landowners for opinions, whether they want.
And it's published. There's a sixty-day timeframe. We can have a hearing, or they can have a hearing, uh, and make findings. Um, no less than sixty or seventy days after that notice is given. Um, there are multiple ways that you can go about annexing property like this, because it's somewhat unique, and that we own it, and we do different things that we outlined. The simplest one, I got, I cut off all the rest of this, because it was given, that might be, go through those different what ifs, and, and it shows the one that I think is the least cumbersome for us. It does involve the county's approval. Uh, but quite frankly, in checking that, no one's given any assurances or anything, but no one has presented this with any kind of troubling, uh, form of consideration as to what might or might not necessarily be, um, a problem in doing that. Uh, there are advantages, uh, as Ethan has already outlined, law enforcement perspective, in terms of the chief and officers going out there. They have primary jurisdiction at that point, uh, whereas now I know that, that they go ahead and patrol that or check on different things that may investigate, but really it's in county. So they, they're doing it as a second out. We don't have any separate agreement, but I'm aware of county for that. Uh, but other cities have that same issue with different types of property, non-contiguous nature. But it's, it's, uh, a consensual, because we only, we're the ones asking ourselves to annex it. It's not adjoining for obvious reasons, because we don't have a contiguous boundary. It's not gonna straighten another boundary, so it doesn't fall under any of the the general standard requirements, the checkoff list in twelve by twenty, but it does meet the standards of, uh, twelve by twenty C to do this. And I outlined in here what those are, and they're very basic, uh, in terms of the things that we already established, so it's not a problem for us to go in and, uh, check off any of the required elements to get it done. Um, and then I prepared all of the initial, uh, pleadings, documents that would be necessary, including the notice that the county published and, uh, representative form of resolution for them to utilize. The only thing I did include in here is our fundamental annexation ordinance, because it has a number of blanks that would be completely unfilled right now, in terms of when and how and what their findings were. So, when data was published, all that goes into that ordinance. So fairly straightforward process if we choose to go that out.
Would the wastewater treatment plan be a similar situation?
Yes.
It is outside of the.
Yes, it limits.
Same thing. With annex at some point, I guess.
Well, when we were looking at anything with that development out there, the city residents that lived out there were very, um, verbal about opposing, and I would expect that they were probably thinking, okay, what are they up to now? But we may be hearing from them. It's like, nah, we're just gonna make it simple and, yeah, and then.
I think reassurance can be given in this case, because it's self-contained.
Right.
We're not anticipating some type of massive growth, and if we did, it would only be by, uh, you know, something opportune. You know, if someone was looking to get rid of a property, we were looking to acquire it for additional space and dollars.
Well, it sounds to me like this is gonna help us clean up some housekeeping issues, and, and probably the reason we're pursuing it now is it's never gonna get easier.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Do you need any action on the side of Ethan?
Um, I think consensus is fair enough to get us started, and just that way, I didn't want to surprise you. We've read the show for county commission meeting, got the ball going there. Um, we probably will look at part of this and just to ensure, um, engaging a survey and making sure we know the exact boundaries of the law for property.
I really strongly recommend that. We talked about that today. Um, we pinned that, so we know exactly where it is, and also those adjacent property owners. Good to see a flag, and if they have some concern or issue, I'd rather hear right now. Yeah, add a county commission meeting.
Chief insurance for someone else's quality. So the county commission, if needing or addressing the issue, would be, uh, safety.
Yes.
Council, anybody else have any more comments? Everybody in favor of the pursuit of this, of this? So we'll move on to the, uh, next item, which is the discussion of COVID-nineteen response.
Um, this is mostly, like I said, a discussion item to get, um, just kind of feedback where you're sure. Although, and I talked a little bit in, uh, the agenda report, you know, the county did up out of statewide government's mandate, um, regarding masks. Um, and there's been various cities, uh, Wichita, Atlanta, some of the big cities that have put mask ordinances in place. I know Seating, I believe, uh, North Newton and Espen are discussing the possibility of mask ordinances within their, um, city. I mean, we are seeing an increase in cases in already county. Uh, they have now, as far as the health department issued their opinion that community spread is happening, which is basically their way of saying they're, as they're contact tracing people, they cannot go to a primary source of work, and that is exposed. It's what they are using the term community spread of, could have been a little more, could be a shot to neighbor, we don't know. Um, we still remain open to the public. Uh, I'd say our foot traffic has certainly increased from, you know, when you were asking for this. Seeing if you all want us to look at any operational changes, or, you know, this is kind of our policy direction, if you want us to look at anything that we're not, just to have this open discussion amongst you all, kind of where you're at, what you expect from us as staff to be looking at, or want us to look at. Um, and so I would open it up for discussion amongst you all.
First, council, not much to hear from tonight, is you.
Um, well, I would say I don't know if you, um, line up just saying you have to wear masks. I'd rather say strongly, one, that if you find it's difficult for you to maintain a six-foot distance in your business, strongly encourage the business owners to say, you wanna come to my shop, you're gonna have to mask on. And then, and that's their choice, and then that, then as patrons, because they're, hey, great, if I'm gonna wear that mask on, I'm gonna go in, or no, I'm gonna go someplace who's, who's not gonna wear a mask. But I don't think this is the council. I'm gonna say you absolutely have to do this, and, because when you start doing things like that, is that who's going to enforce it? You know, who, who, are you gonna get nine-one-one calls, because someone's walking around downtown with a mask on? Um, I just, I would do the right thing. If, if you're, if you're sick, stay home. If, if you're, if your health is at risk, stay home. Find somebody to help you, to give you directions and those types of things, um, and just be smart.
I'm ready there. I don't think we need to go in and start pandering, except for business owners themselves to, to, you know, require that, if they so choose to. Um, I do think, though, that, you know, I, I, I'm not assuming, well, I'm assuming that the foot traffic in city hall and halls remains relatively the same, nothing's really increased. Maybe even a little bit lower with COVID going on, just putting safeguards in for our employees, but, um, requirements would be a lot for us.
Do, does also have any cases of trouble others? I know Burton, two forty-five.
We have two. Two.
I haven't heard of anyone, I was curious.
We have two. Uh, so, um, yeah. Did we have, do we have the, the screen screens up?
Yeah, we, we left, um, the screens up. Um, I mean, not that they did a lot of outside visitors, but, you know, we did have it closed completely off as far as all enrichment and, and wire EMS. They're technically open, but again, I mean, a lot of, a lot of even sales calls and stuff have just naturally taken on a different form since COVID started, because their parent companies are saying, don't go make house calls. Um, so, and I, I don't know that we ran into issues like at P D or that. I mean, most everyone's still kind of in that self-contained lobby. They're not coming back. Our staff are as a general rule, so. Um, and I hate to, to limit public access, because while we do have many options, and a lot of our business can be done over the phone or online, we do have a small, strong contingent of our population that do prefer or need in-person service for whatever reason.
We have some resident concern. Also, people can not get internet, and they don't have access, so, um, it's, so I would, I would strongly recommend that if there's any, any more business owners who want new patients to warn us, I strongly encourage you to go in and to do what.
Any other comments? I think we should call them, or the Harding County Health Department advisors, do for them, and we pay them to advise us, and we should follow their advice. Yeah, I mean, on recommendation, especially in food service, this is one of those situations where it's kind of hard to win unless you have the medical background, that's why I appreciate you putting your opinion out to the needs. I don't have one, because I don't have that background.
We have to, we have masks. I don't want to be a work president candidate, I have to have a mask when I'm in such a county. I have to have a mask to be building. Once I get to my desk, I have to take my mask off, but I have to remove my mask, or something easily caught in the mask.
Be smart.
Just be smart.
So I, I think.
Wash your hands, people. Please wash your hands and be right, and don't touch your face.
You weren't.
We were, we were at a restaurant, I would say, where, and I was in a name or restaurant, we were coming home from vacation, and I stopped to eat supper. And the little gal, her mask was too small. It was down here, and in the, in the just few minutes it took her to take her order, she doesn't wipe her nose, or touch her mask, or take her mask off. Right here, it was like this, like five or six times, and the little one just sit there. We should be on.
You're not looking for any type of action tonight?
We don't need formal action, I guess. What I would ask the council is, do you want us, uh, by next meeting, to bring back like a resolution that makes the official recommendation or, uh, I mean, of a document that's at least able to be put out there, or being posted in our buildings, okay? That's what other governments done, and some just said, hey, we made these rulings, but they're not even going through the resolution step, so it's kind of. A resolution would just say, we find it as a general good rule, please do this.
You could be responsible, you could do that.
Yeah, I think that was important. Who are you gonna recommend? Just keep you walk down the street with a mask.
All of the, all of the county, yeah, I mean, that's a notion too.
I can go with it, you've not already got one.
For review. Yeah, I think, you know, obviously, case numbers are gonna determine future action, and, uh, we'll just, uh, put this resolution together, like Sam said, kind of follow the county's guidelines, but that's all we can do now, until we can get some data to base further action on. Okay, next item is setting up a city council work session.
Didn't we just do one about the long year?
We did.
Did they? Yes, Brad.
What kind of dates did you have, Rodney?
Oh, we are looking at the week of July twentieth. Um, this is the larger budget, and all the department heads are also around the table to answer questions or, um, answering issues on the budget, as you all see. Um, we are planning this year, just to let you know, we'll send out that budget book electronically, um, but we'll hold off on printing it, just in case there are any changes that you all would like to see before we actually go through the expenses of making the physical workloads, but you will have a copy of it electronically to go through, uh, prior. Um, talking to the department heads, the majority of them can make that Wednesday night work. Uh, had the recent amount of conflicts, um, but obviously, it's more important that, that majority of you can be there, um, so we would ask for the week of July twentieth, twenty-second works great. If not, put another date, and we will make it work for one of the staffs.
One, one agenda item in that's budget twenty-two more.
Yeah, but that's the only thing we have scheduled. If, for some reason, we have, you know, something more, we might go along with Michael two oh four. If there's been a substantial update, but.
So if we do it on the twenty-second, the staff, does that mean Boston State?
Same.
No, I'm tired of being low. This is luxury order.
I'm, I'm alright with the twenty-second.
But the needs is out, though.
I may, I may be able to change. I'm supposed, I'm supposed to act as my daughter since the president, so I'm, it's going to be a time of work. And so, and who knows that will change, because what we're supposed to do, that would be.
So are you down for the twenty-second?
I'm good. Twenty-second, second.
She's been holding.
Uh, I'd say, would it work if, uh, wouldn't necessarily be the smoothest, but we can do without zooming, and set it up to. I mean, you can do that. Are you writing?
Yes. I've done that before.
Hey, it's not texting. It ain't texting.
That's what that bound is for, right on the dash. What time? Six. Do you need a motion to set that, Ethan?
Well, I make, there's no discussion of any motion to set up the next city council work session for, uh, July twenty-second at six P M.
Second. Jamie?
Motion by Councilmember Wallace to set a city council work session for July twenty-second at six P M, seconded by Councilmember Torres.
Thank you, Jamie. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. We, let's get to more work for ourselves. Next item on the agenda, we do have an executive session tonight, and I will entertain that motion now. Mr. Mayor, I make motion that city council recess into executive session for fifteen minutes to discuss duties and performance of employee. Pursuit to personnel matters of non-elected personnel, exception K S A seventy-five, forty-three nineteen B one. To include governing body, city manager, city attorney. Open meeting to convene at seven forty-five. Jamie?
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to move that the Hallstead City Council recess into executive session for fifteen minutes to discuss performance of an employee pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel, exception K S A seventy-five, forty-three nineteen B one, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body into executive session. City manager and city attorney, the open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at seven forty-five P M.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same side. We will be moving to executive session. Okay, we're back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of it? Seeing no movement from the council, we will move on to the next item, and that is reports. Uh, we'll start with governing body. And where do I wanna start tonight? I'm gonna start with Ed, because he looks less attentive. Right across the bow. I have nothing tonight. George? No, sir. Michael. Nothing for you, Mike? Sam, I think you have something. You're just gonna do. We go, we go through life in Hallstead, and we take a lot of things apparently granted, and one of them is floods. We have a flood, and water goes down, problem is over. For a lot of people in the city and surrounding areas, the problem just starts. We got a deal going down, uh, project going on on the, uh, Main Street Bridge down in the park. I went down and I watched three dedicated people pull about twelve thousand pound tree out of the river. It sounds like a fair and simple deal, but you're avoiding doing all the damage. I just wanted to give credit to the people that are doing that work, and people that were working on that, they were skilled smiths, hand nickel, and can't make people. It was a hundred and something degree day, and they're out there busting their butt. What that does, it saves a whole lot of stru- What that does, it saves a whole lot of structure damage. Should have hit a flood and there's still a mess up there. Anyway, kudos to those three guys for the work they do. Denise? Well, I echo a few of Sam's comments because I've, I've seen Mr. Schmidt at work and I wouldn't want to have to keep face with him all day. Thanks for what he does. Now we'll move on to the agent for the mandatory report.
Hallstead Fire EMS, uh, welcome to the paramedic firefighter today and then Rindus, who comes with previous experience of the thick person county. This fills that third time paramedic slot and brings Hallstead Fire EMS back to full strength in terms of paramedics and full-time staff. Hallstead Fire EMS is currently experiencing the uptick in calls, both for fire and medical, so staff will remain busy with those responses. The fire one class, which includes students from Hallstead and the surrounding fire stations, is slated to begin this next week. We test it on Saturday. Public work staff will fully transition to summer hours, so staff will report earlier and leave earlier until weather begins to change and cool down again. Uh, recent projects include working on the stormwater system on third, assisting the library and regular golf course with various projects. Install rewatering gas services, street grading, uh, alley work, uh, prep work involving meter pits in anticipation of the AMI. Uh, on that, Center has been in town and installed the collectors and most of the repeaters in various locations around the city. Uh, Center has communicated that their contract will be due the week of July twenty-seventh to begin a larger portion of work through the AMI project. Um, so staff will be estimating meter readings, uh, that next month to allow at a time when we wish to be swapped out. Uh, the plan is hopefully to have everything switched out within one building cycle, if at all possible, and weather cooperates and all the stars align. The majority of the contracted work on the stormwater system by Lake Continental has been completed by the contractor. Staff will work with the contractor on finishing out that project and Lake Continental should be free to finish their improvement project from their facility volume completion. Whitewood Golf Course is having the finishing touches put on the clubhouse project, uh, correction to some of the issues that have occurred during construction. Uh, and improvement of apartment lot areas slated to be this Friday and Monday of it, of course. Uh, Whitewood continues to host tournaments in C L A to play compared to previous years. Hallstead Parks and Recreation are ramping up softball and baseball these next few weeks. End of year planning for the swimming pool is also underway. With recent announcements regarding both centers, alternative events are also being evaluated concerning the annual softball tournament that they will co-sponsor. Uh, swings and stuff are should be finished and installed to be called in the receipt and available hardware. All departments have continued work on the twenty twenty-one budget in anticipation of an upcoming budget work session. Uh, work is also being done in preparation of submission for reimbursement of COVID-19 related expenses through the CARES Act money. Uh, being passed down from the state to the counties. I have been asked to join that committee. Uh, that will help develop a plan for the CARES money that will be coming to Hardy County, um, and represent the viewpoint of the government in that plan. And then develop the countywide plan that will eventually be used, uh, with more information to you all as I know more about. I've also learned that I've been appointed to the executive committee for the Kansas Gas Agency. Uh, develops with various aspects and consultation on the operation of a gas utility and those meetings that we will be doing this month. E L K N governing body institute has transitioned to a virtual format this year. Uh, there is a discount for more attendees, so if any of you are interested that could not make that trip to Manhattan, uh, strongly encourage you to give Jamie details on the event. Uh, the speakers planned should still be presenting relevant timely information that might help you all in your positions. And that event, virtual events, uh, will be Thursday and Friday, which is July thirty and thirty-first. Um, and I think they're planning to have some of those sessions recorded and that so that even if you can't watch them at the time, um, you can watch them later. And I do know they do send out new copies of the governing body handbook, uh, at the league rights, which of course is supplemental to what we give you all during the location. As part of that process, but if any of you are interested, the cost is cheaper as well, but it being a virtual event, but due to cases, um, in the state, they decided that hosting that live event was not, not, not feasible. Just wanted to point out some information there at the end of the council packets regarding, um, the grant that, uh, the fire department qualified for and then two thank you letters, um, from the Kansas Learning Center for Health for, uh, Parks and Rec sponsoring the Big Fit program, which was done virtually, but still very successful. I mean, there was also, um, and that would have been less. But, yeah, also, Lance has asked a lot of thanks for the donation for that, um, project as far as the community, Earth Garden, you know, covered seating areas. So if you haven't been, mind seen it, I think it looks really great back there and it was a great project. Now, sometimes it seems like we don't get recognized for some of those things you do on the community, but I just want to point your attention to those. And then as far as just a few housekeeping reminders, city will begin disconnecting utilities again starting this month for non-payment, uh, which will put us in line with our existing city policies concerning dates for payment. Anyone who's having difficulties in paying their bills, uh, I just encourage you, contact city hall to discuss their account. You know, we're trying to work with everyone as much as we can. Animal registrations may be completed by this Friday at five P M. to avoid citation for non-registered animals. Uh, again, that was something that was extended, uh, gave everyone another basically forty-five days to do it. Due date and this Friday is it. Finding ordinance number twelve ninety-nine regarding, uh, green rights away in streets is non-effect, so please do not mow it or plant the rare vegetation when maintaining their lawn. It's in the streets, alleys are better. So they, you know, visited about violating that ordinance. And that is all I have. This is the minute of work.
Any questions for you and council? I have one question, might be a little off topic, and I'm going to look at on this following agenda. Do you tell me what's wrong with that fire hydrant up there on Second Street?
When we ran through and did our hydrant flushing, for some reason it will not isolate or shut down again. Uh, we are preparing to replace it.
What's all the sand coming from?
They are bedded in sand for drainage, so it's just starting to push it up. And for some reason it's getting worse right now, so.
There's a depth leak under that hydrant.
Yeah, it is, the, the seat and the hydrant won't shut off. So it's also had drains, so it's pushing water past the seat and it's just coming out the drains.
Okay.
Yeah.
When do you think that's going to be replaced?
Um, I'm waiting on parts right now, so we just was able to determine the depth and make sure that kind of, we thought there should be a valve on it for isolating it, but there's not, so we're going to have to cut one in. I don't know. We got a few like that, so we will correct that wrong, you know, but just.
Well, I've been getting a few questions about it.
Yeah.
There's something a little bit of a fair answer. It keeps fresh water in the rain spots.
Does that too. I believe we want to do it, but.
Next item under reports is the second quarter financial. I know we've always looked forward to these. I didn't build on that.
Um, well, I'll start off, if you look at the budget fund summary, um, as I told you, a lot of what we were seeing in the earlier year months, um, was due there just as moving, so uh, various transfers and things around. So now that we're on kind of the, the quarter mark, you can see that, uh, that the number in the hand as far as our cash difference between our previous fiscal year and this year, um, has gone down dramatically, uh, still in the red. And that's of course not what we'd like to see. Um, but that number is almost completely attributable now to the losses of revenue um, that we've seen or anticipated, such as our interest income. Um, so basically our, our transfers have held, um, or started to equalize out. We, and most of our other difference that is larger, the general fund was just due to a decrease in cash carryover, which of course we had anticipated uh, from this year compared to cash carryover last year. Expenditures remain, uh, very above or under what we would anticipate those time here, so I just want to thank the department heads. I know they're really watching everything that's coming in and how it's as close as they can. Um, and, uh, understand that we need to be very conservative just with the unknown budget situations we're facing. Uh, the recreation fund does see an increase, um, in the cash balance and that's, uh, basically the whole open layer. So that typical reimbursement back and forth between the rent commission and the city, um, didn't take place as early as it normally does. So that is why there's more, um, funds there. And then our utilities, you can see that they all still are about relatively the same position, um, they were last year regarding cash balances and those accounts. So they continue to operate in healthy shape. Uh, wastewater does also the decrease, um, and that's mostly due uh, to increased professional service costs, which is the wastewater treatment and facility assessments. Uh, that are still working on, but those are not normal expenses, but are being paid out of the operational budget at this time. As far as our capital, um, improvement and city equipment fund, uh, you have that spreadsheet there in front of you. Um, as you can see, there was a debt as we paid out the road improvement projects and the capital improvement fund. Um, we do have a few more funds that we transferred in, the road improvement projects, before we suspend the rest of those transfers. And then we have, um, our city equipment fund sitting at that balance, but again, we anticipated a decrease, uh, both with the potential purchase of equipment to authorize this evening and of course the AMI project, which you've already authorized. Um, a majority of that would come out of the fund, so. A lot of those balances are sitting there. They are prepared to take those hits uh, to the overall balance. Um, other than that, we, uh, as discussed in our last work session, will be suspending budget transfers, um, until later in the fiscal year to make sure, um, all the funds stay healthy. So you might see some of these, uh, with various projects that are approved by the fire, um, you know, that that bill has been made and, you know, the fire department should be pulled through normal transfers and at all possible, make those transfers and and finish paying off those equipment purchases out of those respective funds, but that's all, this is all internal, um, always subject to us. There's not a negative balance in there. There's actually the, the total balance is building within that book, so. There are any questions, but, um, we are seeing some bright spots. As mentioned, uh, Whitewood's revenue is looking out very well. Uh, so at this point, they're actually, I think, with maybe about five percent of their total revenue from last year. Um, and obviously it used to last around all this future every twenty months, uh, we should see an increased revenue for Whitewood, which will be a nice. Um, so not all is, is doing a boom. Um, and so far, we've seen sales tax, um, numbers that have either stayed with or slightly above last year. So not taking that drastic hit, often you might, but there's still a lot of time and, and sales taxes paid by, aren't various scheduled by our retailers. So we're, uh, we're not out of the wood yet, but hopefully it's looking like maybe this won't, uh, be quite as negative consequence as we were anticipating, which means so.
Any questions for Ethan on that, council? And with that, uh, that finishes our agenda this evening and I would ask for, for Gerber. And Jamie will review that.
Motion by council member Wallace to adjourn at eight oh one P M., seconded by council member Campbell.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Thank you, council. We are adjourned.